Sandy City Council Meeting in order, please join me for the.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome everyone. Jeff Lee, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilor Pete.
Here.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hookinson.
Here.
Mayor Poehl.
Here. For normal, I'll start off with a quick review of this evening's agenda. First, Jeff has anybody submitted? Excuse me, for public comment either online or in person?
No, Mayor, we've had no submissions.
All right. Well, we'll start with any calls for changes to the agenda. Well, then let's get past public comments that were submitted. We have proclamations this week for Arbor Month. We'll then go to our consent agenda, which has our Sandy City Council goal-setting meeting minutes for March 5th, those are council meeting minutes for March 7th. It sounds like we're not going to have a presentation from PacWest today, so we'll be moving straight into old business. Where we'll be discussing Sandy Net ARPA project approvals. Then we'll go into new business, discussing the CCTV package for wastewater collection system nine improvements for basin six and seven. And then discuss your wastewater collection system I and I improvement for emergency stormwater pipeline repair. We'll then have reports from the city manager as well as our committee and council reports. And then please remember council, stick around afterward for our executive session. With that, are there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? All right, moving forward, we'll go to our proclamation of our Arbor Month. All right, whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas the state of Oregon recognizes the month of April as Arbor Month. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city of Sandy is now recognized as a tree city USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to expand its tree planting and stewardship. Thanks a lot, Jeff. Stewardship practices. Now, therefore, I stand poehlum, mayor of the city of Sandy, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Arbor Month in the city of Sandy and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Month and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the harp, and promote the well-being of this and future generations dated this 4th of July, April 2022. At the Arbor Month, everybody. That will move ahead to our consent agenda with our city council meeting minutes for our goal-setting meeting, March 5th, as well as our council meeting, March 7th. Unless there's discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Make motion, we approve our consent agenda for a second.
Motion my Councilor Pete told a second by Councilor Walker to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose nays. Motion carries. We'll move forward into old business, Sandy Net ARPA project approvals. Great.
All right. Evening, council. Let's take a moment here to finish setting up some old stuff. It's also in power. I just have some quick changes here. Councilor Walker did submit some questions and I realized that I could clarify some stuff further. So it's also in the PowerPoint, but it's passing around some comparisons from cost and service areas that were defined back in November 1st. Okay, so tonight I'm bringing before you a action item for whether to award a contract for design and construction services for the Sandy Net ARPA and wastewater treatment projects. And the purpose of these is to extend fiber down to the existing wastewater treatment plant off of Joll Road, as well as to utilize American Rescue Plan funds that were allocated back in November for expanding to select locations or relative locations based on what they final design might come back at. So if you all recall back in November, council had awarded $449,000 from the ARPA funds to Sandy Net Expansion to service remaining underserved areas within city limits, as well as provide businesses and other areas the ability to gain access to fiber that didn't have it before, as well as creating a design for the wastewater treatment plant, which it currently has, I think, a phone, a couple of phone lines for service connectivity down on Joll Road. And to use funds for that out of, I believe, a wastewater loan or money that's been allocated for that. And the cost breakdowns for those can be found on exhibit A and B. But we submitted an RFP back in February, council approved findings for us to go out and solicit a build-design contract, which came back with two responses from OFS as well as Hingles and McCoy. Both of these companies have performed work for us in the past, both on the original fiber to the home network back in 2014. OFS had designed and was the professional services that created the turnkey solution and hired Hingles and McCoy to come out and do the construction. What's a little interesting about this one is that now both those companies have responded with an RFP. And OFS, I guess, wasn't, didn't select Hingles and McCoy to perform the construction this time around. They selected North Sky, which if you go through the the bomb, which I believe is exhibit C, talks about the OFS cost breakdown. And the big cost on that one is because they selected North Sky, which came back at $58 a foot or estimated. And Hingles and McCoy came back at $32 a foot. Those are probably the biggest changes out of the entire, the two RFPs. Everything else is different, but those were the biggest ones that set and offset the cost when you compare them. The reason Hingles and McCoy responded to this project, if you reviewed the RFP, they were recently acquired by Mastech, which is a large telecommunications engineering company that does design as well as construction. They're pretty prominent and behind the scenes a bit more, but they're very large. So I think with that recent acquisition, they came forward and said that they could do a design-build and run the entire project, whereas before in 2014, OFS would design the project and then hired Hingles and McCoy as a contractor. So the prices that came back for the total construction and labor from OFS came back at roughly $2.5 million for both the wastewater treatment plan and ARPA. And these are, these are just the numbers that came back for the everything included, which the slide is up there.
You're set up to a screen share.
Oh, I apologize here. No, no, I will do that here real quick. Weird that your IT guy can't figure that out. So now that you can actually see my screen here, you can see that both projects came back at 450 units, where OFS came back at 2.5 million for construction labor and materials, and Hingles and McCoy came in at 1.4 million for both the wastewater treatment project as well as the ARPA selected zones there. And this is something that I'll touch on in the next slide as part of the analysis, is that the 450 units is not what's currently reflected. When we went and put this out to an RFP, we selected as many zones as possible to try to get an estimated cost per zone, so that we can have better guidance on which ones to select potentially. So we went out and had them design as much as they could during the RFP and respond back, which is why the numbers are higher there. However, if you go back to November staff report, we only selected, I believe, eight of those when we were talking about it. And then when the RFP went out, we wanted to get as much information as we could. So this is just kind of a quick example of a map that was returned there for the wastewater treatment plant. I believe it is roughly 800 and, or 8,500 feet of conduit put in the ground to get all the way down there, going past the highway and then proceeding all the way down Joll Road. And then this is the bomb here. This is also, I believe, exhibit A on the staff report there that should break out every, all the costs from the fiber to the interduct, to drill it, to put it in the ground, cases, splicing, everything like that, as well as additional overhead for design.
Just clarify when you say bomb, bill of materials.
Yes, yes, sorry. Please, yeah, sorry. And then for the ARPA, there is also another bill of materials here. And these are costs that were, at the time of the RFP, which came in on, they were due on March 11th. So they are a little less than a month old, so they do change pretty much on a weekly basis now. But as you'll see in later on, when we selected the zones, I also did build a little bit of overhead in there, so that this can adjust and fluctuate if needed. So if you note down at the very bottom of exhibit D, which is the Hingles and McCoy bill of materials for the ARPA project, it does include and say that it passes 450 units, which is everything that we had included in the RFP. And it's also important to note that this doesn't cost, this does not cover the cost of the customer premise equipment or the modem that is basically determined by how much take rate and which customers at which locations sign up there. And it's something that we already do on a daily basis. This focuses on the construction and bringing the fiber up to individual units to break out for customers.
Greg, can I interrupt with just a question? So on this thing, you, you, what you have right here is 352. And then, and then the 1 billion was, that was for 450, about 50.
50 units, yes.
Okay, and so, so is the big cost like the hood chalet and stuff, because there's a big difference there?
I'll explain that here in this slide also, because you'll see the ones that are crossed off are the ones from November 1st on the right-hand side that we eliminated from the project. I can go step by step and kind of just get into some of the analysis on this, on what we chose. Hood Chalet is the, is the bluff mobile home park that sits behind Tollgate. It has approximately, it has 82 units. And no, back in November, we had predicted, we thought it was at about 100 until I actually typed in each individual address and looked at it, each individual address for all 450 sites passed. I didn't know the exact cost, so we, we tried to get a rough estimate and we came fairly close on most of them. We anticipated doing that one with wireless, just based on how many units were there and we knew the cost was going to be high. Then we figured out that the requirements for ARPA are 100 down, 20 up minimum and prefer fiber. And we couldn't find a way to justify doing point-to-multi-point wireless or high-capacity short-distance wireless connections out there. So we ended up actually scrapping it after we got the, the cost back for how much footage was for those location, that location specifically. And we did that also for the tremble ones, mostly because of density. And then the park crest condos based on location. We actually had only received a handful of requests there over the past five years for fiber service, whereas some of the other ones had higher demand as well, which also kind of had a weight in which ones we kind of picked, so.
So how did, how did people in Hood Chalet get their enter?
The phone company and Wave has extended service usually from Sunset Street in the past there. So they've slowly built out infrastructure over time on that street.
So most likely if I'm living in there, a kid in there that needs to do schoolwork, I can get on Wave at that point?
You can usually get Wave or DSL, and I believe both of those offer rate assistance programs through there. And the other ones, so basically between the left and right, from November 1st, the revised ones underneath the actual units on the right come out to 352 versus 379. So there's actually a few, we overestimated some of the units. And then within the project, we selected, the sites we selected come out to about 222 to serve. And that one is contingent based on whether or not we do Cedar Hill Gardens, which I did build a little bit of fluff into some of the underneath exhibit G is all of the bill of materials for the sites that we selected. And I did add about $25,000 extra on each one of those sites. So should everything work in our favor and we had some extra, we could do Cedar Hill Gardens, which is the lowest of, lowest number of units selected for, of the five that we picked. And then I did also break down the cost per unit here between the two projects. Without Hood Chalet, it comes into about $1,500 per, per home pass for the cost to build it out. Whereas the ones that we selected in the, in the responses we got back comes at about $2,100. And a lot of this has to do with drilling and how much work is actually involved with these ones. And this is also a point that I, the Councilor Walker did touch on also, is we do run our own drill crew here. We are busy, but basically these were some of the areas that we identified that we have always wanted to build out to. But basically at the rate that we grow and where we're kind of at and the costs, without kind of funds like ARPA funds or something to help kind of subsidize or offset some of those costs like that, it would probably, it wouldn't happen for a very long time. It hasn't happened already. And without something coming in to kind of help push it along, such as, you know, the ARPA funds here, it's a very likely that it probably wouldn't happen. So we tried to prioritize ones that we, we don't want to go out and get the, necessarily the ones that were the 12 units that we can easily go out and get ourselves. We want to get the hard ones out of the way that we were never going to be able to do with our crew. And so additional notes here, I kind of talked about a lot of these here. There was actually a change on November 1st staff report. The total came out to $454,000. However, 449,000 were allocated, so minor or small change there. The estimated units, original proposal was 379 units for $454,000. The revised one came in, you can look at the bill of materials underneath exhibit G. The Hingles and McCoy proposal states that 450 units could be passed for $1.2 million. And our current projections based off of those bill of materials that were reversed, basically reverse engineered from the RFPs, comes out to about 222 units passed for $484,000. If that includes the Cedar Hill Gardens, that 20-unit one that if we have extra, we can build out there that was selected. And then in the staff report, it says 60%, whereas in November's staff report, it stated 50% take rate. I think staff is pretty confident in the selected areas that we kind of picked already, that we could get to 60% based on part of the criteria when we selected them was, that was, we've gotten a lot of requests in those areas and there's people waiting for it. People, there's a big enough list of people that do want it, that we think that we could easily get between that 50 and 60%. So that's just kind of example, another example of the design for, this is Dollwood Estates, this is one of the big ones that we get calls every week for, for the past five years in service. It's always been hard to get out to that one because it would require hiring a private locator to come out and locate the water and sewer since it's all private property. So those were some of the other challenges that we ran into in the past, which kind of always brought the cost up, which is why it's higher and that cost per home passed for the overall project. And so I know there's probably a lot of questions here, but let me kind of wrap up on this. The wastewater treatment plan design, when in November 1st staff report came in, I think it was between 400 and $500,000 was kind of our projection. And then when Hingles and McCoy did respond back, they came back at 314,000. So it was actually a lot cheaper than we were kind of expecting in that sense. However, I would also anticipate that for the amount of distance that they're drilling continuously and some bias in Google Earth, I said it's probably, it would, it's pretty, we're pretty confident it would not exceed 350 to be able to get fiber lift up there. There's also other considerations that weren't put in that project, such as finding some dark fibers from City Hall to be able to backhaul that back there and a couple other additional things we know are going to come down in the future. So I think I pretty much covered everything that was in the staff report on that, but our recommendation is that staff respectfully request that council authorize city manager to enter into the following two agreements with, and to award Hingles and McCoy the bid for designing construction of broadband connectivity to the existing wastewater treatment plant location with a not to exceed amount of $350,000 and to build fiber out to the remaining underserved areas that were previously defined in the staff report with a not to exceed amount of $449,000.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions?
Greg, with all of the issues that are going on now with supply chain problems, inflation, et cetera, et cetera, gas on and on, how confident are you that this is going to be not to exceed? I think they're required to stay underneath that. Is that right?
Yeah, if there's a not to exceed, then they will not be able to go over it. And those costs will have to be realized after it's awarded, the final design that gets approved.
So we would not accept an additional charge down the road. Is that right?
Yes, and that would have to be, there would have to be some writing in the, in the contract to make sure of that.
So that sounds a little weaker than what I first heard you say. So there's no chance this one will get any larger? Yes or no?
If we write it into there, then if the project will not be able to exceed that now.
I heard if again, so.
Unless it also wants to authorize more, you know, because the design comes back, costs go up. Now, we're only able to do, correct me wrong, we're only able to do 190 units or something, connections or something. I was like, oh, we want a little bit more than that. And they have a proposal for another $100,000, get, you know, say we couldn't do Cedar Hill Gardens or something, you want to throw more money. Otherwise, no, the contract we written can't exceed this amount, connect as many as possible. We think we can do 222 within these neighborhoods.
So we feel pretty confident this will end up with this amount.
My.
Within all of the units, the 352, right?
Yes, so there is the 25,000 that was added for extra in there for this, give or take this month. And what would happen is as soon as it's awarded and signed, the design would go out and they would come back with those accurate numbers. And then those numbers, once those are agreed upon and that we can confirm that that's going to happen, the contract, they would be able to order that equipment, that cost would be sunk at that point. And then it should, it wouldn't go up. The only thing that could go up is if they hit unexpected, you know, water lines or something else didn't exist in there that was.
I'm thinking more of inflation and more of supply problems. I'm just thinking about what's happened with our wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
You know, it has just gone crazy.
The difference in this one is it's, once the, the materials are already actualized, the act, the numbers and everything required. So as soon as it's ready to go, it can be purchased for that price that was bid on. And then at that point, there, you know, the ground, hopefully the ground doesn't shift, you know, requires extra conduit or anything else like that. But those should be pretty fixed. So the only thing that would be potentially variable would be your labor costs or something like that. So the material costs themselves, if you, if they're fixed and you order them, you've got that lead time until they come in, but you've already sunk that cost, they bought them for that price, you're just waiting to get them delivered.
Can I, if I heard you right, so our period of variability in pricing is between now and design complete. At the end of design complete, that's when our variability is going to be mostly locked in, because that's when you make your purchase order for your materials.
Pretty much, yes.
You're going to do the purchasing early on rather than down the contract.
Yeah, so once they come back with their revised prices, we would want to hop on it as soon as possible, because before those prices change again, market it.
And that's part of the contract.
And I think we could write, yes, we would write it into that contract there, whereas if we can't agree upon a final price before we sign it and they order it that, you know, next day or, or whatever, at that price that we agreed upon, then it would probably just nullify the contract. And that could be, that would be written into there so that we don't put ourselves at further risk.
Yeah, I think that would be important to make sure we go forward on this, because I'm aware of some of these apartments that are, right now they either have no access to do a very slow access to internet at this point. And some of that's pretty frustrating, so. Would like to see this thing go through as possible, but I'm fearful, I guess I'm not really confident that we aren't going to start exceeding some of our costs. So anything we can do to lock those in early as possible, I think is really crucial.
I think, yes, if it's, if it's written into the contract, the bill of materials and those costs, and that's what's agreed upon, the materials get ordered and then they just have to stick to the prices that they agreed upon and labor when they come out and do it. They would, everything would be ordered when it all comes in, or they could probably get started and do it in batches, depending on what's available, what's readily available. The prices of the vault can be, we could change some of the requirements on some of the vaults to try to find cheaper ones or ones that are in stock also. So there's, there's a couple of options there.
You keep saying if, so it sounds like.
Right, because, yeah.
Construction, it changes by the minute.
Lock this in as soon as possible.
So I think if is be my if too, when I talk about technology, it's just, or road construction, or, I mean, as we speak, it probably went up 15 bucks.
Right.
You know, I'm right though. Like, it's just like crazy. So I think that's, you know, part of it. And unfortunately, when go out there and estimate this year in November, the prices is going to, we've seen, we're all experts in this now, right? Doesn't shift just because it's running fiber versus still construction, so.
Kathleen.
So, yeah, it sounds like whatever the contract that, what would change, then, you know, depending on how much we allocate, the scope of work, the number of units would shrink down based to reflect the not to exceed.
Right.
Is there interest in us, I guess I would ask, you know, you and maybe Jordan, you know, what's the potential for your motion language to be requesting the 484,000 rather than the 449,000? Just to get all, all these 222 units that you have here? Because, because already it sounds like if we go with 449, we have to take Cedar Hills and off the list. Is that something you, what's the process to do that? I know that, that, I don't, it's ARPA funds and I don't know what are, you know, you know, we've got second tranche money and blah, blah, blah. I don't know whether, is that something that you all want us to consider or? Because I'm willing to consider it to get all 222 done.
So clarifying question for Greg, on the projected to serve, is this a account for the 60% or 70% take rate? Or is this passing and dropping every unit within those neighborhoods? So the 222, is this, is this every single unit within those neighborhoods or is that projecting the take rate?
So the take rate would be that 60% of that, of that number. So that's totally it's passed. So totally it passed for the entire thing, then the ones that we eliminated come up to the price.
So our, our actual cost could be less, would be less on equipment and things like that, that are internal based, but not, not in terms of contract based, right?
Yes.
Okay, so 484 would be the number, revised number based on your new neighborhoods. Never pass. Answering the council's question, should we, should we ask for 484, revise the ARPA number to 44?
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, the 222 includes the Cedar Hill Gardens to come out to that 484 number. So otherwise subtract 20 from the 202 if we're not doing Cedar Gardens, which is what that cost for, the bottom one is, is the cost per unit passed without Cedar Hill Gardens.
Cedar Hills is 43, so that would get you down to the 49 amount. So I'm just asking, you know, I'd rather see us do Cedar Hills. What's the process for? And I'm assuming that you're going to put in 222 units, maybe not everybody's, you know, maybe only 180 are going to take or whatever like that. It'll still be put in, right? In case they move out, somebody moves in and wants it, right?
Yep, and one other piece I forgot to clarify is that these locations, I've already gotten confirmation that we are basically allowed to build in some of these on some of them. I haven't. Basically allowed to build with some of these on some of them. I haven't reached out and gotten confirmation from each one of them, so the areas. Um, if, and I don't anticipate us running into any, any conflict with um, them selecting other area, but if that were to happen. Uh, we could come up with something equivalent, another area of, of either units or cost, depending on if that. Apartment or way, uh, property owner says, no, I don't want you to build out here. So I've tried to go out and reach out to as many of them as possible. Um, I didn't wanna reach out to everyone, so I knew we weren't gonna do everyone, so the ones that we did select were the big ones and so far we've got approval from most of them.
So all these that you have listed here, you have approval for?
I have approval, I think, for three of them right now and they're the Knollwood Estates. The industrial park doesn't require approval, Cedar Hill Gardens and Sandy Vista are, um. I know the people that run both of them here and we were going to do that at the beginning of COVID, but uh, we ended up not having the funds to do those ones. So I just need to pick that conversation back up, but we've already basically had kind of pre-approval in the sense long ago with that one. And then what's the last one, Evan Streets, I've left them a voicemail and I need to follow back.
So yeah, just following up on my question, just do, you know, what's, do you want us to recommend four hundred and eighty-four? So that you can get all two hundred and twenty-two in the contract?
If it's something that is possible to happen, I will, I gladly, you know, I would, I would love to see that happen.
Jordan, is that something that can happen with our?
Yeah, so, you know, the final rule for ARPA, um, as I think we, we've shared it, change where we can. Um, essentially use up to ten million dollars and uh, basically categorizing its general revenue for any, any governmental purpose. Um, so it doesn't have to be targeted towards broadband, water, wastewater and, and so, you know, what we are gonna recommend for tranche two is basically just allocate everything as general revenue. So that becomes most flexible to use for any purpose, right? Now, with the first tranche, the money that we currently have in our, in our funds, um, there was about two hundred and fifteen thousand. That was already designated as general revenue that wasn't committed for other programs. Um, and so it's easy to just kinda take that amount and throw it in the pot towards the Sandy net commitment as well. We're, we have a tracking sheet for all the ARPA uh, programs and, and how much we have, um. But I'm just, I'm saying, yes, we can, we can make that work, um, without impacting any of the other commitments that the council's made.
Well, I'm supportive of doing all of them. One you crossed out, I guess.
I have, I have a question. So the, the cost to the wastewater treatment. Is that a fiscally responsible decision? I mean, are we, are we moving it out there? I, I understand it, right? But is that the best fiscal decision for us? Or are we just moving it out there so that we have better internet and is there a better option for us? The distance and geography and would that be a, a, a better option later on down the road as, as we expand and grow?
So. Um, I, I think it is. I, I think what we, what we see is a price that, um. You know, I think previously Councilor Hockenson brought up, you know, is there a way to get other bids or something on that particular project? Is there other providers that would do that? For us, um, and, you know, we could still go that route. The advantage of us doing it is Sandy net and in particular for us. Um, having a dedicated secure fiber line that we're not piggybacking or using a backbone from another surface provider is attractive to us, right? Um, so secure to our treatment plant, uh, what's, it's within our existing network, we would be operating it and responsible for the infrastructure. Um, and we have the opportunity to get it done now, uh, or at least uh, start the design and hopefully the construction now. Inevitably, we're gonna need infrastructure improvements there that, in terms of technology, right? Um, and so there is still a question of would even a private provider provide service down that way? Um, you know, and if it weren't their time and effort to do that, uh, for a three hundred thousand dollar project that may or may not have other customers along the route. Um, that's an unknown until we kinda test the market, but as a service to the treatment plant, yeah, I think, I think it would be a huge operational. You know, advantage for us to be able to have that fiber instead of. It's a DSL.
Four hundred thousand dollars, huge. That's, that's what I'm saying, I mean, that's, that's, that's almost as much as we, I mean, we could honestly get Sandy net to the rest of the people we're missing. And still have money left over. Given if, if we, if we miss.
Well, our proposals to use the fourteen point seven million ARPA fund.
But it's still money.
Yeah, but it, but what I'm hearing though is that all this money can be washed into general revenue and then used for whatever we want.
Well, our.
No, but my, my point though is, on, once you have the ability to take restricted money and put it into a non-restricted fund. Now it becomes prioritizing where this lands with your overall operations of your city.
Yeah, just pointing out the three hundred four or whatever, the final number from WNTP would be coming out of the loans and the other funding mechanisms.
Oh, sure, it would be coming out of the fourteen point seven state grant from ARPA, so that has to.
That's where I'm getting it confused. So you're talking about the fourteen point seven allocated funds.
Yeah, that one can't be washed, that one's for wastewater.
What, what does it mean Jenny can, maybe Jenny can address it, you know, to, to have or not have these, this internet connectivity for the sewer.
Well, um. I do remember, I think, two council meetings ago.
You might wanna come to the mic.
Sorry, Jenny, thank you.
I have a note, I think it was Councillor Hokinson that asked that we get a private bid from Wave and, um. I haven't had a chance to do that yet. So looking at this, we did have a budget of, I think it was five hundred thousand dollars for this. Sometimes I saw four, sometimes five, so seeing this price was well underneath it and. We do need to get fiber and better communications to the existing treatment plants. I think it's. One of the backbone pieces we need to rebuild, so we get into better compliance. And so my take on this was this price is well below budget, it's gonna get done faster and. That, the performance of that existing treatment plant really matters to the city and the growth in the next few years, so that's why I was, I was for it. And who's to say if when we get around to bidding this out separately and having different contractors do it, it could come, it could come in at a much higher price. So I was looking at it as it's under budget, this is a way for us to continue to improve the reliability of that plant. So I was in support of, of this proposal.
I have one other question on that. Is this, is, I, I didn't really pay much attention to what the scope of that whole thing for the sewer. Is that for stuff that is going to be built into the future? In other words, providing fiber net to something that we're gonna build under one B, phase one B?
It, it's actually included in the big program budget that you've seen. I included a line item for this.
Right, if we go, if we.
It could be using the plant today, I mean, or, you know, we'll connect it and then the SCADA system and everything can.
Yes, right, and that's important, but is some of this also connecting to some, you know, like the, the east side plant and all that? No, okay, so it's just for existing.
We have fiber that goes down Sunset right now.
And my concern is, is that we, we don't have fiber up down to that uh new old plant because. That's the part that will give us some of these automated responses, setups and stuff that we don't have at this point. We have some internet down there, it's so spotty and hard to get, but I'm very supportive of getting that down there. Now, the question I have though is. If we were to use a contractor like Wave, it's fantastic now, whatever, they're calling themselves. How secure is that in terms of? And I hear all these things about somebody breaking in and being able to stop it and compared to Sandy Net. And we, we're more secure than, uh, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, the service provider matters as much.
So the, the difference with ours is that it'd be called a, a dark fiber connection for the city, uh, like all the other city facilities. Um, where it's the only thing running on that line. Uh, it's not underneath what's called a shared medium, so there's no other traffic that's not city related or anything where you would get that with the. Another provider that would be building the line and sharing it amongst their.
So Wave or whatever they're calling themselves now, were to do this instead, we're talking about an alternative provider and we. Would we even talk about other, like there's a couple churches down there and some houses and stuff like that? Can we connect with them and, and continue with that, what you're calling dark fiber?
Yeah, so.
Security for the plant.
Yes, and basically, um, and I can pull it back up here actually.
I just want an opinion, I need details.
Well, I just wanted to show you the map of it here because the, the point uh is that the, the fiber that we can pull through there is, uh, it's. At a minimum about twenty-four count, so it only actually requires a few strands to do the dark fiber and the rest of it could be used for some. It could be separate underneath existing cable that's our.
Even with Wave.
Uh, Wave would either do coax or if they did do fiber, they would have to tie back in and then find a way to pipe it back to city hall.
So, I, I go back to my point, if you want dark fiber, you can buy dark fiber, you just pay for it, right? It's, it comes down to what's your security criteria and how much you wanna pay.
So, I kinda have, have a little bit of experience, twenty-seven years of experience running fiber and, and understanding and contracting. Contacting out with, um, um, some past cable companies into doing that. Um, and in all those prior to what we've done all over the county with dark fiber, um, you, if, so. If they have coaxial cable down there, it's not gonna have the abilities to do what we wanna do. It will be, uh. Meaning to be a VPN connection, there's electronics that are gonna start costing us more of this that needs to be replaced, okay? So there's that piece of it and it will go back into their main hub and there. Is there security risk? Well, you can encrypt things and all these things, but it is that shared medium that he was talking about. But there is a limitation of that and usually on the upstream. So some of the things that we've done at the other plants is video cameras, there's surveillance. But also not just for in case someone wants to break into sewer treatment plant, I mean, definitely on movies, right? But, um. I was being kinda funny, you haven't got my humor yet, but, uh. But the, the point being is you have that, but then you have all the SCADA and the SCADA is not just the simple SCADA as it was twenty years ago. There's more and more of that and we wanna have that. If you're wanting redundancies, you, meaning some of these other pieces of it. The only real reason to get or ability to get redundancy is if we hadn't actually built our own anyways and then having a backup in that. They would run it aerial through that area, which this is underground. Which as you well know, you've all been there, tree branches fall down on that and then it goes down and then you have an overflow and you didn't know about it, right? And so there's that aspects of things that you'd be very careful on, but when I go back to my point of helping to hook sites up all over the county, schools everywhere before. Uh, we did the dark fiber and everything, you could spend well over three hundred thousand dollars to get down there. And then they're gonna charge you a, a huge fee on top of that, uh, for a much minimal amount of space. So, actually that was really a, a cheap price, uh, in, in hearing about it, um, but. Then you have what he was saying, you know, along the way, are there a few other customers? Sure, a lot of customers, no. Uh, that would, you know, could potentially pop up on it, but you gotta remember, another company coming in there, there's only a couple other places to hit off of. As you get down there, um, and they're gonna, you know, string fiber down there when they could go to a neighborhood of, you know. A hundred homes and pick up their clientele for that, does that make sense? So, but they would cost us, uh, quite a bit of money by having another company do it. Cause they're gonna be building the same thing out, they're building the exact same thing out, they're gonna wanna monetize and recoup their cost of that, so. That's my, my two cents of a lot of history of building fiber out to anchor, what we call anchor institutions, so.
All right, go for it, man. I totally my personal.
All right, uh, first of all, I, I don't dispute what Jeremy's saying about that, what I'm saying about buying it is, my fear is right now, we have a circular quote. So that quote that you're referring to and being underquote was started as a Sandy Net quote, so there is no outside quote that validates that number yet, so for me. That's the whole point in getting an outside number, just tell us how good a deal this really is and no issues. But I'd like to back up, if I can, to the prioritization that we have of the various areas. Because these, these different subdivisions or neighborhoods or apartment complexes have different per unit cost. Regardless of take rate, you know, some of them are quite affordable, uh, some of them, well, I shouldn't say quite affordable, all expensive, some are less expensive than others. Is there, the, in my mind, it makes more sense to prioritize, um. You know, independent of geography and others, but just literally off cost, the biggest bang for the buck. If you're given whatever the number is, four hundred fifty thousand, then give us the most units you can. As opposed to specific units, I mean, because one of the Knollwood Estates left in there, you know, that's, that's a thirty-one hun, almost thirty-one hundred dollars per unit. Before the take rate. So you play your sixty percent, what is that gonna be? That's almost five thousand uh, uh, per connection. And that's a long payback.
So, so the, I agree, the only other equation I put in there though, and, and maybe it's mute, maybe you could get Wave versus whatever at any of these locations. Would just be the accessibility to internet and alternatives.
Right, if there's no.
If there's no other alternative, then I would look to prioritize that.
Equity perspective and say.
Exactly.
You deserve it or need it.
I'm, I'm not aware of the Knollwood issue, but I'm aware of a couple others, Cedar Hills for sure. Wave has tried and just failed miserably, so, but they have, we have now is, the only real option is to get somebody that. Will do an aggressive entrance into those and that's gonna be Sandy. And I think that, you know, some of these places, as Wave changes hands and so on, it hasn't been a very dependable. And, uh, some of these are, are less. Long, maybe older seniors, that kind of stuff, less financed. People who are, don't have the money to be able to go out and buy a lot of expensive internet. So to me, I, I'm not sure what Knollwood is, it looks like it's horrendous cost comparison of the others. But I'm, uh, also concerned about the ability for some of these. To be able to get any service at all.
So, so Greg, what, can you help us with that? I mean, are, are there? Are, are there some on here that just have no access to the internet or very, very little?
Yes, the one that's probably the biggest that has no, uh, little to access the internet is the, uh, industrial park. Sandy Industrial Park off the Ruben Lane, uh, it's only got DSL, there is no cable out there.
And it's all commercial.
And it's all commercial out there, um, which sits right off in the entrance that it would tap into would be Sunset Street, the one that shared that would also feed. Uh, Knollwood where our existing fiber line runs to go down to, uh, Sunset Street there. Uh, the other one that is, it's technically served by the other two locations, but it becomes an affordability issue. Is Sandy Vista Apartments off of Vista Loop, um, and then the Evans Street.
So, so Sandy Vista has what now? If I wanna get on, if I'm a kid at Sandy Vista Apartments and I need to get online to do my homework, what am I doing?
You're calling Zipley or Wave or.
So I can get those, so I do have access.
You do have access to those ones, uh, they do offer service there.
Okay, the cost is lower because of the existing infrastructure, right?
Oh yeah, Sandy Vista is, um, if, if we're able to, when we pick up the, the deal that we had with them before. Uh, they actually have pipe that goes to every one of those buildings there, so that's why the cost is actually as low as it is, it's only the cost of fiber through the existing pipe. Because we have a partnership with the, the main office there.
That's less, that's an eight hundred and fifty dollar per unit potential as opposed to the three thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess the way I look at it, those, you know, looking at Chulay, Trimble Estates and. Park Creek condos, that's about a hundred and twenty some odd units. And the difference is, you know, going from that four eighty-four thousand to that one point one seven two million, you know. Million cost, so like six hundred thousand dollars for that hundred and twenty units. So it seems like we've already kinda gotten the more efficient, um, cost per unit ones highlighted.
And that's what we tried to do and it, it's, it's not a pure quantitative analysis on this, a lot of this is weighted based on. How many people we know contact us regularly in these locations.
But I, you know, I kinda consider that, you know, yeah, if money was no object, we could do all of them, but I kinda figured this is a good start at. At, uh, getting, you know, two hundred and twenty-two folks possibly. You know, reasonable cost and I, I, I'm gonna say that I do support having the Sandy Net be the ones to get us to the sewer treatment plant. Just because when it's, you know, when it's broke or whatever, you know. You know, it's like the cable guy, you know, maybe they'll come, maybe they won't, but we need it fixed and, you know, it's gonna be high priority, so. Having all that in-house is really important to me, I don't care as much about the cost. It could get cheaper, but it sounds like it was still under, well into the bid, but that's.
I didn't really pull off, uh, show you.
Um, I wish I actually had the, I had it attached to show, uh, the layout of it required a lot of extra drilling to actually pass every unit there. Uh, where it was almost redundant, where if you know what that is, kind of a, it's a giant circle and then it's got streets in the middle. It require an entire ring around the, it. It require an entire ring around the it, and then connecting down each individual uh street there. So it actually, it passed a fair amount of units, but it also was very had a lot of distance that was kind of almost wasteful in a way, where it was like there was so much extra drilling that was required. We figured we could get the cost per foot at a better deal on some locations. And the fact that both Wave and uh the phone company are able to service those ones currently, because Wave has built in there over the past five years. I know people can get it. Um we still, it's still a goal of mine to get it done at some point there. It's just every time I go through and designed it myself or saw the designs that came back for it, I was just like, and it's, that's like to do Hood Chalet would be the entire ARPA funds that were allocated for us for one location.
So the cost per user was a lot more essentially.
Yes. And I don't have the exact number in front of me to, to just spit out.
Plus you have an alternative service for that.
Yes.
That, that's crucial for me.
Yes.
Cause if you, if you've got somebody who's already trying to service that and has that ability, that's really a low priority for Sandy. That. So if we got something, and, and I just happen to know that this Cedar Hill Gardens is, is one of our most vulnerable, least financed people. A lot of those are section eight types of folks, so very low income. And, and very difficult to get um those other services in there. So.
It's actually.
They don't have access now?
I'm aware of at least uh two or three of them in there that have no ability to get access. We won't get to them.
Some have waves, some don't. They don't, they're not required to service every unit or anything like that. We actually still have one wireless customer out there.
Yeah.
Coming off a street light, so. It's so cheap.
So people who don't have a choice, you have Cedar Hills and Freightway.
Uh yes, I, I will need to double check on Evans. I know the phone company services it. I don't think, I don't know if Wave services it off the top of my head. But that was another one where I actually had the property manager call us because their tenants were asking for, for service at that location to investigate it.
Other than Sandy Vista, it's the lowest per user cost.
Or which one?
It's twenty-three hundred, a little over twenty-three hundred.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, when you break it down per person, it's, it's, it's one of the, it's the second cheapest.
Yeah. And if you look at the design for it underneath exhibit G, if you go through all of those, you'll see it's actually kind of a straight line that just goes around the outskirts of the locations, because it's actually laid out pretty interestingly where it's not super difficult. Like if you were to look at like the chalet or a, uh that one where you have to go in circles. So it's uh, uh that one uh does come out fairly cheap. Um cheaper. So, sorry.
I want to make a motion. Um. So I make a motion that we um uh authorize the city manager to enter into agreements with Hankland McCoy for designing construction of broadband connectivity to the existing WWTP location with a not to exceed amount of three hundred and fifty thousand and to build out fiber to the remaining of the underserved areas in Sandy, the two hundred and twenty units listed here uh with a not to exceed, uh not to exceed amount of four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion by uh so motion by councillor Walker, a second by councillor Smallwood, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries. Uh package for wastewater collection system, I and I improvement basis six and seven.
Yes, thank you.
CCTV.
Yes.
Okay. Um, good evening, everyone. Um here tonight to ask for approval to authorize the city manager to enter an agreement with J and M Services to perform CCTV for Basin six and seven project. So um background. One of the major projects we're doing this year is continuing our collection basin system work. We authorized basin six and seven last month and Leeway Engineering Solutions is working on the design of the main line and laterals. Uh this project is going to reduce inflow and infiltration into the system to protect the wastewater treatment plant. And there's a very aggressive schedule, which includes design overlapping with construction. It's really important that CCTV inspection is, has to occur ahead of time so they can identify where these laterals are to be replaced. Um the design engineer Leeway asked for us to solicit independent CTV quotes. I believe last time the CCTV was done underneath our contractor, but with the schedule pressure we have um to get the design work complete before the construction this summer, they've asked the city to enter into independent contract. Um I really have to give a shout out to Ryan Wood and the Public's Work Team for assembling these all within a week. We've collected four quotes. Uh there was one unresponsive, three quotes of the three quotes. Two are fairly close in cost and this is something it's important to um note. Uh Leeway Engineering is recommending we approve the second lowest bidder. And the, the reason is that we use this bidder in the previous contract and they worked really well with the city. The prices are really close and with the schedule pressure, they're recommending going with a known contractor.
We're allowed to do that?
Uh if you have findings, yeah.
Well, doesn't state law make you?
Go with the lowest. Yeah, I know.
On construction projects, I believe.
That's how this is.
Well, this is CCTV. So this is professional services um to conduct this, um which CCTV is taking the camera down the pipes. Or that. Yeah, Chris, can you clarify?
Yep.
The low blood question.
Yeah, you're correct. Those apply to public improvement contracts and this is a services contest. It's more in the nature, oops.
You're on.
You're working.
Um this is more in the nature of a professional services agreement, uh sort of like that, an engineering or architect uh contract rather than public improvement contracts. That's why it's, it, it doesn't have the same rules.
Okay, thank you.
We also did solicit quotes for doing the cleaning of the pipes and the laterals beforehand. These prices were coming in around fifty thousand. So Ryan and the Public Works Crew are going to do this labor in-house. So they'll basically be a net cost to the city. So instead of spending fifty thousand to hire that out, we'll just spend twelve thousand dollars to rent a tractor truck. So there are some savings that we're approaching with this. But I did want to point out, this is not the lowest bid, but it's within about ten thousand dollars.
Does your staff have time? I know we're lean and nice is what Mike used to call our staff.
I, I did ask that and Ryan said that they do. This is about a month's worth of work and um they said they don't make time to do it. Thanks for asking.
Yeah, cause I keep piling in stuff on my team too and they're all finding new jobs. So I don't want that to happen.
Um, I want to make a motion.
Or is it?
I'm ready. I'm ready.
I skimmed through it. So the recommendation is to.
We're all there.
All right. Yeah. Go ahead then.
All right, make a motion.
Make a motion. I moved authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with J and M Services in the amount of a hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars to perform CCTV services for basin six and seven of the wastewater collections.
There a second?
Second.
Motion by councillor Walker, a second by councillor Exner, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries. All right, we're going to want a lot of detail on this next one. Real briefly, then they saw that we passed on, we moved on. Yeah.
Okay. I thought there was still one.
All right, Jenny, you were on the wastewater collection system, I and I for emergency stormwater.
Thank you. Um so here again, decision to be made, whether to approve an amendment for inflow and infiltration reduction project and agreement with Oxbow Construction to rehabilitate the Tupper Road Storm Sewer. So um to give some background, I understand that um late last fall, they discovered this failing stormwater line. It's underneath the road, so we have concerns. I understand portions of the line are causing sinkholes in the nearby park. Um we have, Mike Walker initiated um some checks with our city attorneys to see if we could add this work to the CMGC contract. We indeed can. And because of the urgent nature of the repair, we are recommending going with this. We've checked the unit cost per foot and they are reasonable, especially when considering this is a sole source contract. Um I did include some of the pictures of the line, but I'm, I'm pretty concerned about it. By the time this is authorized, they'll be able to go in and do this work. We won't be expecting high flows. Um in terms of the budgetary impact, the proposed amendment, which totals a hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents can come from multiple funding mechanisms such as business financing, sorry, Business Oregon Financing, the city's allocation of ARPA funds or general fund contingency. Currently, the stormwater fund does not have um enough funds available to allocate for this project. However, it's a fairly small number and we do have several options. So um Tyler, as well as Jordan have reached out to Business Oregon to require about obtaining a low interest loan, um which is a possibility. I think as I've said, we've got multiple sources. So go ahead.
So uh the, as the council is probably pretty aware, our stormwater utility is pretty underfunded. I know we don't want to talk about another utility where we have wastewater and water projects, but um this is one of those consequences when we collect three dollars and fifty cents, I think, for our stormwater utility and we don't do any capital. Um and so uh as Jenny's probably concerned as I am, that there could be other projects like this out there and, and there is probably a conversation we need to have with the council in the future about stormwater rates and our stormwater utility and the fact that we could have broken stormwater pipes like the one we discovered uh this year um out there. And so our options are funding, things like this are pretty limited in a utility that really has no fund balance and no capital funds. Um with such a small utility fee. So we can, we did contact Business Oregon, we could get a loan. Um and you know, we'd increase our stormwater rates by, you know, at least a few dollars to pay off uh, you know, probably a ten or twenty uh year low interest loan. Or we, you know, can, can skip adding that debt to that utility and use ARPA funds um or general fund contingency, um hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. We can, you know, uh either allocate the ARPA or the, or general fund for that. You know, it's really, that's, that's uh the financing conversation and funding uh questions for councils, you know. We can pursue debt and there's some cost to that. Um it's a low, you know, amount of debt that would take on, but still the process to going through that uh to get a, a loan through Business Oregon um versus allocating out existing, you know, funds that we have through ARPA or the general fund contingency.
Maybe we should just pass the plate tonight and see what we can do.
Or maybe, no, I gotta tell you that our stormwater count is really minimal. We have a lot of issues in the stormwater thing that we have yet to deal with. I know we're gonna have to take a look at those stormwater plans and how our system works. I don't think we know very much. We, we gotta do something about this. It's something that does affect our current wastewater treatment. That wa- extra water in the winter time, it makes those things really critical. We need to reduce that. If those are broken and they're going into our sewer water, that's a problem. Even so, even if it doesn't go, it goes straight into our, our streams and our watershed. And I think it's important to make that right.
Interest rates right now are relatively low still though.
And they're gonna go up.
And they're gonna go up.
Two percent.
So.
Mayor, if I could. Um I remember our budget session, we had an awful lot of contingency accounts scattered pretty much everywhere. I've seen one, one of us might have made a big deal about some of the size of those contingency amounts.
There's always one.
This feels like a contingency. Um and it needs to get fixed. And I think it's ridiculous amount of money to go get a loan for in terms of the, the effort and overhead. It's ridiculous and find it, figure it out, you know. And I for one support, you know, doubling about three fifty to, that's something to make for down the road.
Future discussion.
I'm just buttoning it forward to the matter right now.
All right. Yeah, I support it. I think we need to figure a, a, a fixed solution now and a fixed solution long term.
Yeah.
So I think this conversation has a quick answer to it to get it fixed. Now, I think that we should bring it back to figure out what, what that fee is there to. This fee was in place right before I came on council. I remember us saving our money, our pennies with that fund, because we never had it before.
We have.
To do that parking lot down there with the, and Mike described what was all underneath. It was great. Uh but we had such a bigger, wider system down there. I would love to see the pictures, but is this, when I read here, the water is going into the sewer system there? I mean, many other places too, but many water going into the systems. Is that right? Down there, the sewer system?
It is, but I, I'm, I'm more concerned about
The sink.
The road going over it.
Yeah.
Um and the sinkhole that.
Is this part of the underground no name creek that's going through there? Cause the no name creek goes underground and it goes right down.
Park, through the middle of the park.
Goes through the middle of park. Is that, oh, is that part of the sinkhole type thing? What is, okay, so what are we looking at? I mean, I, I love the context. Pictures are a million more, so.
I don't, I don't think there's.
No, I get that, but it's, it's sunk there, but in the report, it says it's going into the sewer system as well.
We don't know that.
What says right?
No, it, it is. That's how they discovered it and how they discovered it was, it was oval. So.
Not all necessarily, but it was adding to the.
Yeah.
A big stormwater, forty-eight inch stormwater pipe. That seems pretty big.
That seems like.
I'm just wondering if that's what.
It might be no name. Yeah.
Carrying the creek through there.
No name creek, is it all, it's, it's all underground.
It's all very, anyway, I know the pipe was put in like the first year Mike was here, so that's how it was. Yeah, so it's time to, we gotta get on it. This, this, this popped up the first week of March.
So Jenny, if you could find a way to make no name creek clear water too while you're at it, man. We, we would install you into the Hall of Fame.
This, this is the case where this price was from the fall and we didn't bring it March twenty-first, because we had to recheck on the price. And they held the price for us. So not everything's gone up in construction.
I couldn't support using the contingency stuff. I don't know.
Let's do it.
Make a motion, somebody.
I want to do it.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion. Doesn't have too much emotion. I make a motion that we authorize uh city manager to enter to contract a hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine and sixty cents. Company. Oxbow. There a second? Uh there's a uh uh motion by councillor Sheldon, a second by councillor Hockenson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose nays. Motion carries. Thank you. Good work. Um, all right, Jordan, you're up.
Um thanks, mayor. Uh just wanted to um put in the record uh that nice letter of appreciation that we received from Jim Kite, I think, was from, for the response our police department did on a rollover accident on three sixty-second. I thought that was very kind of Mr. Kite to send that in, um but very pleased with the, just how fast the response was and just the courteous service from uh through Sergeant Craven, um and Officer Lane, so the Sandy PD. Um interview panel for Parks Board, we have a couple vacancies uh due to some resignations. Um I think last year was councillor Smallwood, uh Walker and Exner, I believe. No?
Oh, that's good with those. You guys still want that?
Sure.
Okay.
Mayor, in the future, maybe something I want to do is just set up an interview panel um on like an annual basis or something. So we don't have to revisit this every time there's a vacancy and just have it set, but.
Let's maybe do that.
Okay.
Kill anything else? Yeah.
Sometimes you don't know the councillors yet either. It's the like trouble.
Yeah.
You know, in people's interest, kind of like, who would have thought that Don was going to be so into wastewater, you know?
You just never know.
Um just reminder on the SCI, uh statements economic interest, I think those are due on the fifteenth. Um so you may get more reminders about that. Staff are putting together in uh some videos for the comprehensive plan. Uh you've seen all the, um I wish I brought my postcard, but that Sandy Speaks postcard, I think, is pretty cool. Um and so part of the rollout um will be a video. And then I think planning on doing videos throughout the visioning process. So um Shelley, you know, would, would love to be able to sit down with councillors um and have, you know. Shelley, you know, would would love to be able to sit down with councillors and have, you know, you guys can say how important planning is and doing the comp plan and things like that. But feel free to reach out if you'd like to be a part of that.
Shelley Dennis though?
Yeah. So it is. And and then thanks for the response on the homeless forum that we're looking to pull together. April twenty eighth seems to be the consensus date that I kind of just did a save the date for groups to be a part of that. Just so we can get that moving. I think councillor Smallwood and Sheldon and I are going to meet this week to kind of talk about the agenda and then bring them back to the code amendments too. So yeah, I think we're looking forward to that. I know we have a busy stretch in front of us with this meeting, the meeting on the eighteenth. The main meetings will be pretty busy for you guys as well in terms of council business. But I think that's a pretty important forum the community's kind of ready for.
So April twenty eighth and like.
It's Thursday at six o'clock. Yeah.
Send an invite out.
Yeah. I wanted to make sure there wasn't any fatal issues with that date, but I had five responses, I think.
Oh.
Why is that on my calendar? What day is it?
Thursday, April twenty eighth. I think you responded.
I think I did.
Yeah. So.
I've responded to a lot of it. I'll talk to you.
Okay, well, all right. The virtual will be an option.
Yeah.
So if you can make that work, that's it for me.
All right, done.
Thanks. Jordan sent out an email the last week or so about our vision statement. And we threw a few of the thoughts and things on it. Take a look at it. Please send Jordan your feedback. It'd be nice if we have some sort of something close to where we can just make a real fast five minute discussion and move forward. And just as a reminder, that vision statement is not the same as the comp plan vision statement, which will be developed as part of the comp plan. It's more of a tagline to go on our letterhead and website and stuff like that. You know, maybe the comp plan will come up with a better one and we'll revise it in the year. Other than that, thanks. Cool.
I know we're having that conversation today. Well, just to be brought up.
I haven't gotten any responses yet. No, no rush, but.
Oh, I was ready to talk about it.
A couple really positive things. Got a tree fell down over here in Mining Park. Got cleaned up pretty quickly and I let us this evening, I walked out there like it fell right down in the sidewalk and walked up a whole bunch of stuff. Thanks for doing that. It works. Fast response there. Also last week, I was able to go on a ride along with Sergeant Craven and Craven, I mean. And it was very positive. Kind of a quiet night though, what's going on in terms of law and breakage and that kind of stuff. I've been involved in a couple of them that we had guns out and nothing was fired, but we sure had some exciting times. So it's kind of boring this time, but it was a great conversation. I had a lot of good stuff. There's some good information in the on the ground kind of people. With the homeless and some of the the things that we're doing and not doing. So I'll probably use a lot of that when it comes to conversations. All right, I'm gonna try to be upbeat, negative. I'm concerned quite a bit about the comp plan committee. Missed the vote on some of our business people and some of the folks who are long term. Folks who do know a lot about the city. And I think that some of the missing names on some of those are going to be needing to be involved, whether you can or not. They're not in a committee. So I'm really hoping that these smaller site satellite committees that we keep talking about can be a good, strong input into that. That's really important to me because I think if we don't involve some of these folks who are involved in planning, business, things that are happening inside the city, we're going to end up paying some consequences where deal with it late rather than early. So we need to make sure that we, that I can provide some names, some folks who are we're hoping that they could get involved and did not get involved for lots of different reasons. Some of that was their own fault, not being part of the submission of their names. But some of that, I think we could have done, I personally think we could have done some more inclusion in some of the stronger parts of the community. So just so you know, I'm really hoping, I'm trying to get in touch with Shelley about what that process looks like. I think that's. And that's it.
Um, we had a really nice party for celebrating Mike's retirement and also celebrating all the employees there and the work that they've done to kind of help Mike get off his project. Because God knows, he didn't do it by himself. So that was really, I think, there was almost like fifty five to sixty people there and it was a nice send off. There's a video kind of overview of his life with pictures of a lot of the employees that sent me a picture. And then I catch some off the internet that got so anyways, it was a very nice event and that was, I think, a good demonstration of how we can show recognition and appreciation of our employees. And I think that's really important because they're all working so hard. And on that note, you know, I've just kind of thrown out, I was been down at the community center trying to find all my bowls and everything that I took down there. But also just, I know, you know, I don't steal anybody's thunder, but you know, those folks are working with very reduced staff, but just doing an amazing job of filling all the holes like a Dutchman in the den, or you know, we're joking about it. And I know that they've got, you know, things already lining up, you know, big recreation programs and events like Noah's Quest. I know the music in the park. I think they used to get like three or four thousand dollars a year or something in in business support from, you know, we call those supporters, I guess, the sponsors.
Sponsors.
And Carol's kind of taken on that project and she has over ten thousand dollars in sources. And she's got some really great bands. So, you know, it's just, I'm just so impressed with the work that that our employees are doing and really excited. I will, on the comp plan thing, the thing that kind of came into mind for me was looking at all this wastewater issues and things like that and trying to learn more about it because honest to God, Mike and I never talked about it hardly at all. So I'm learning a whole lot. But the thing that does come to mind is just the idea that when we're doing our call plan, we are going to be somewhat limited or constrained by where we can do wastewater. You know, a lot of our, part of our area drains just deep creek, part of it goes to Tickle Creek and part of it goes to the Sandy River. And when you start saying that we need to have pump stations in all these different places and the issues and challenges that come along with having all these facilities in different places, it gets really expensive and difficult and, you know, you know, an inch, a mile wide and an inch deep kind of scenario. So I would hope that our challenges with wastewater are being kind of addressed in a way, you know, I don't quite know all the science or the approach to it, but where we expand in the future with that comp plan is going to be, you know, need to be constrained or be driven by topography and our ability to, you know, pay for it in the future. So anyway, great.
Thank you. Rich? Yeah, just one thing. I know, so we're getting the second tranche of ARPA money in that. And I know in conversations with Jordan, I was educated that there's, there's only one group of employees that are represented by union. Police officers. So one thing I'd just like to throw out there to consider is to Kathleen's point a little bit about employer recognition is perhaps use a little bit of that money for some employer recognition that's been done throughout the state now. Plus also given that I don't know where the CPI is going to land, but I'm sure we're not going to be able to fully make that up. So it's a one time contribution towards that as well. So I'd just like to kind of float that and for any ideas or anything like that, but I do think that would be a valuable use of the second one. Not, obviously not. So. Other than that. Right, yeah, Parks and Trails Board met last month, obviously, and kind of went over the pool task force. Here does recommendations and the information that was in that. So I think they're excited to see what the next steps of that will be in moving forward. That department is very shorthanded for sure. Parks and Rec and it sounds like they're very busy recruiting employees and personnel and doing some interviews. So hopefully they'll be up and running. I know they're planning on, like Kathleen said, music in the park, softball's returning fourth of July. So a lot of stuff coming up for them. So as well as a lot of kids programming, Noah's Quest and whatnot. So and they did just bring on a senior. Some Monday. Yeah, it starts Monday. Yeah, it starts Monday. So they'll be getting the senior center up and moving and programming moving forward with that too. So that would be good for for the community. I did sit in on like the first compliment meeting with the the individuals with the advisors and Shelley walked them through, I think Kathleen just sat in on that via internet. Yeah, Zoom. Shelley walked them through kind of the process of their packets and ways that they can interact with people in their groups to get information. And it was interesting to sit through that. I do have some concerns that that group is disproportionately represented in the community to say it nicely. So maybe more on that later. Other than that, that's all I got.
Correct. Thank you.
Jeremy.
All right. Well, it's nice to see some orange cones in the construction zones here going for a new sidewalk headed east. I actually saw the first people besides just the cones this morning when I was taking the kids to school, standing out there in the rain. There's like, I was like, all right, they put the cones out, but where are they? You know, things move slow on that side of things, but places moving forward. Race out here, the transit right across from the, I don't really want to call it like Concealment, whatever. From the Transit Center, there seems to be every day now they go in the work, I see someone's shopping cart and belongings or something up on the sidewalk, blocking the sidewalk there. I don't know if same place day after day. So blocking the sidewalk. So I know that we have all these rules and things. Curious about that one there. We had the economic development group meet last week on the economic development plan. They're looking at the RFPs last week and so that went really well. And I think David is doing some reference checking on some of those things. So glad to see that. And people bring that forward and get that kicked off here along with all the other plans wait for done hopefully this summer.
We have C four coming up on Thursday. Jordan, I missed that meeting, but have you heard about this fireworks ban they're talking about doing in Clarkamas County? I had Chair T. Smith reach out to me and some other mayors this morning about it. And I want a feedback and I didn't want to provide feedback without at least weighing in getting, you know, the rest of council. What are, what's your understanding as to what they're talking about?
Sounds like the commission's considering a ban and it would be unincorporated.
So it wouldn't affect us?
No, she asked if other cities were considering. There was a few others. You know, that that are considering are tying it to certain elevated levels, you know, the fire district put out, the fire risk. But I bet you were there too. I, I, that was, I think, I don't know if they've made a decision or not, but I think.
They're gonna talk about tomorrow. But your understanding is they're just talking about non incorporated areas?
Yeah, they want to have jurisdiction on.
Interesting. Couple years ago, the fire district had the ultimate authority on putting those bans.
Right.
And then it was said that wasn't. So now the county can do. I'm so confused. Who has the authority to do this?
Yeah. I don't know. I like. Me personally, I appreciate liberty.
And fireworks.
And fireworks, and fireworks, you know, so. And then just to close out, I want Andy with our Transit Department reached out. Very exciting announcement. You may have read about it in Sandy Source, the newsletter, but Muna, I'm so bad with names. I, Muna Ruston.
Muna Ruston. How do I see her last name? It's.
I think it's Ruston.
Ruston. Okay. So anyway, our Transit Program Administrator, she was recognized as Transit's outstanding employee at the Oregon Public Transportation Conference a week ago. It's just pretty incredible. Yeah. She's been outstanding member of the staff. She pursued both a bachelor's and master's degree while being employed at the Transit Department in twenty eighteen to as outstanding student of masters in business administration at Eastern Oregon University. But you can watch the video presentation on the Sandy Speaks newsletter or Sandy Source newsletter. But yeah, just outstanding and just another example of some of the cool things we're doing here in our community with our our great city staff. So with that, thank you, everybody. I'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. Break for five minutes, then go on to the next session.